I'd like to call to order this special working session, Bath County Board of Education, February 17th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Discussion of tonight's agenda. Discussion of consent items.
Tonight's agenda is very concise. On the consent items, items 6A through 6I are the same recurring consent items we do each month, so I'm not going to cover those. And then 6J is simply its request for sealed bids for district-wide copiers and printing. Just like a car lease, we have copier leases and they are coming to an end and we just need approval to send out bids for our new copier leases.
Item four. Construction update on BCHS with Pax Walker and change order request from Ross Tarrant.
Just the one page I want to pass out is just simply showing you what's remaining. It's pretty much the gym, all right? It's phase, what we're calling Phase Nine. Yeah, so we got Phase Nine, starting March 1. Now that, that completion date, that's probably going to go to June 30. But anyway, we've got the two lobbies, the, the two entrances there, and then we've got, you know, the restrooms, all the offices there, and, and then the gym itself. That's where, and then the only other work that we have is, was, you know, your main entrance, what used to be your main entrance. We've got those doors and frames to install. I think the frames are supposed to be here, I think maybe tomorrow, I'm not sure, but we got that working a little bit of floor. Once we get the doors and frames in, then we've got some flooring to put in. And so we're, everything else is pretty well finished. We just want to give you update. And then on the, where we are on change orders, both of them, we have, you know, we're doing good as far as having monies left over on the, on the high school. We, you know, it's like 230,000 and then you've got, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my glasses, but.
What's that amount? Can you see?
178,000.
Yeah, 178,000 on the other project that's, that's remaining. So we're, you know, the, the Lavec project, I think, the, the Lavec project's pretty well completed. And so we've got a balance there and the big project on that was your storm drainage issue that we took care of. That came out of that funding. So we had very limited change orders on the, on the Chanel Lavec project. And then the high school, we still have a, you know, a good balance. And here we are getting close to the end as far as in your contingency funding. So that, that's where we are. Any questions or anything this time? All right. Thank you.
All right. So regarding the change order in front of you, that is for the high school project and it's to no longer replace an existing but recently installed rooftop unit that is over the office areas adjacent to the gym. The photos that you have in your packet, I believe it's the fourth document or really the second image showing what the existing roof unit is. I think it was installed around the 2019, construction of this part of the, of the building. And the intent was to take that away, put a new one in so that it was all new with the rest of the HVAC that got installed with the gym. But after closer conversation with the contractor, and I think Tim, it was decided that that would be better saved to not be spent on a new one. The downside is I believe they already ordered the new unit, so the credit here is $3,750 and, or $3,750 for, I believe, the labor to install that work on the roof for that one area of the offices of the gym or the offices adjacent to the gym. But that unit is being turned over to the district so that you all can use it at another location should you see fit. There was just no way for the contractor to return that brand-new unit after they decided that it was a feasible option to propose giving back credit. So what you have right now is still within its usable life, meaning that it was installed in 2019. There's a brand-new one that is going to be turned over to you all anyways. The credit here is to no longer just do the labor to remove the existing one and put a new one in. Oh, yes. The, there are two. One of them is for sure. The one I'm talking about is a mini-split unit that is smaller and that's going to go into, was going to go to a different location on that same area of the roof. But Tim is correct. We were initially doing two different units and now only one of them is fully getting replaced, the other one. That item's going to be handed over to the district just to have, but the credit here is to no longer do that one unit's install job. I also recognize that we can maybe talk about the revised DFP if there are no questions about the change order credit.
That's the next agenda item.
Yes. Item five. Discussion of the updated district facility plan approved by the local planning committee.
Yes. So with that, I believe you have about four pages of your district facility plan in your packet. The main items that you have to look through are the ones that are italicized. So the first one being crossed out of the intent to do a new middle school. That has to be shown just because of the, the record-keeping of KDE, that this is a finding of your original plan, so that has to stay as crossed out. But the real new adjustment is what you see as item 1C. And that 1C lays out everything that qualifies due to its age to be replaced per building section. So you'll see that the first page is all the stuff that qualifies in the existing oldest part of the building with a KDE budgeted cost of $10 million for just all of that anticipated work. In reality, I want you to know that is not realistic. That is just KDE using property insurance replacement values. But for their planning purposes, they estimated all that work in there would equal that much money. The goal would be when you look at that section, looking at the next sheet, 1970 section, the 2006 section, and then any of the additions that could be done, the board would be the ones picking like what of those items you would actually want to put on the BG1 to proceed for an actual project. So just think of it as a shopping list for what could be done that's up to your discretion. In reality, it's whatever scope you feel like is appropriate for a renovation, not limited to everything being in here, but here's what you get to pick from as you think about what that project would be. I will draw your attention towards the very bottom or the end of your, your document. Under priority five discretionary construction projects, there were items that went beyond the cost budget maximum that KDE would allow you to do. So if a new school costs 25 million, KDE would only let you spend 80% of what a new one would cost in their budgeting eyes. So if, in their eyes, it says 25 million, they're going to cap you at 20 million. So everything you see listed under priority one equals up to that threshold. Everything else that did not qualify went underneath priority five that you could do at any point. It would just be limited on general funds or your local fund options at that point. So the LBC agreed that the items for major renovations of program areas, meaning to renovate some of your existing square footage to do some current tech spaces for middle school or what they call locally identified program, which is just a catch-all for whatever you feel is important for the kids to have in the school. Both of those items are eligible to be constructed. They just cannot be using restricted funds that the legislature grants you all. So because it goes over that threshold, they're automatically put underneath priority five. So hopefully that makes sense about what is changing for the renovation, what's eligible for being put on the BG1 up to your discretion. Just being mindful that if you pick something out of priority five, it cannot use restricted funds. It has to use your local tax dollars. But I can answer any questions if there are any.
I just want to make sure the board understands, so I'm going to clarify and I, this is the way I understand it. So if I'm incorrect, let me know. So 20 million in the middle school is the most that we can put into it and hit the 80% threshold. Once this board decides to put money into it, once we've hit 20 million, that's the end of, no more funds can be put in there unless we're taking them out of our general fund, which we definitely do not want to do. And so Ms. Combs and I will, will talk to the board as we progress. We want to be, I think we need to be very selective in what we put into the new middle school. We've got $7 million, 7.1 that has to go in there. And so we want to make sure that we put what we need in there for that building to continue. But if we put all 12 million of our bonding in there, then we are bonded out and we are at zero and it will take many years to get back to have some funds to do other projects. So that's the board's decision and everything, but we feel like we need to be very careful in what we do and don't. And I can't speak for construction manager or the architect, but the 7-1 is probably going to be, if not all, 90% eaten up just by HVAC. And so.
Correct.
We'll immediately start getting into our, our bonding and we'll, this board will need to decide how far and how much you want to go. And I think that'll be better explained as you, the architect tells, everything will have to be deconstructed to build. So some things can go in the ceiling and we can do multiple things there because we're tearing it down. Then other things we'll get into, we'll have to pay the price three times. We'll have to, if we have to go through walls and we have to put a hole in the wall, we have to put in what we're going to put in there, then we've got to patch it back. So the world's not our oyster. We're going to have to be very specific in what we do and how we plan, or we'll spend a lot of money. Because even at 20 million, what you're saying, that's their numbers. When they said 25 for a new million, we're talking about 35 to 40.
Correct.
So 20 million in renovations is really 25 or 30.
Correct.
So when we finish this middle school, that's what I've been saying the whole time, we're still going to have 15, 20 million dollars worth of need, but we, we're going to, if we put 20 in it, we're still going to be capped out and can't put it in there. Let's take it out of general fund, which we don't have in the general fund.
Correct. Yes.
That's what y'all know when we do this. At, at 80%, we're done. And if we spend the 80%, we're capped out.
Yes.
We've bonded out.
The DFP though, is budgeted per KDE dollars, as long as that's clear and not surprising you all when you see BG1 or something larger, which we will not go anything over whatever the threshold is. If it's the grant, 7 million project cost, we'll make sure we can do as much as we can in that. But I don't want you to feel that you're like, well, I was expecting to have a majority of the stuff listed under priority 1C budgeted at $10 million when in reality that scope would probably cost you 15 million. So hopefully that's clear.
Let me ask one more question if you don't mind. So we say 20 million and we're going to do 10 items, but we have, just like in this renovation, we've experienced change orders. So let's say we've got 20 million on the dot, we get into putting HVAC in and we find out, okay, it's going to cost us seven, but there's a change order and it cost us eight. That means we've got to take a million off. If we're a million over, we've got to take a million off something else in there, right?
Correct.
So even in the picture, if we're going to say we're going to do these 10 things, as we get into it, we may have to do nine because we had an unexpected number, might have to go to eight, so we'll need to prioritize, correct?
Correct. But any project you have, if it's the $7 million grant, as part of that project cost, it's factored in a construction contingency to handle any of those discoveries for change orders. So you're not paying anything beyond what was budgeted for the project unless there were unforeseen, like devastating big change orders that go beyond what the contingency can cover. So as David discussed, the high school had, let's say, 300-something put aside for contingency already in the project. And as we were billing against that for any new added cost that was taken from that pot of money, if we somehow discovered that we need to fully demolish that gym and that gym itself is going to eat up the remaining balance and then some, then yeah, you would have to go beyond what you budgeted for, for the project. But no matter what, if the goal is to do everything within 7 million, there's already as part of that 7 million, a construction contingency that's a part of that project to help any change orders. And if there are none, you get all that money right back. So hopefully that makes sense that you're not adding on top of your budget, but it's already budgeted in to the project.
When you say the 20 million, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? Like if we maxed that out within the next three years, when does that give leeway if something else comes up that we have to purchase?
Let me see if I can restate your question. You're asking if you all decide to spend as much money as possible on this middle school over the next three years, when is the next time you can start to spend more money on it? Is that what you're asking or?
Well, I'm just saying if you met the 20, because you said we can only go 20% or 20 million, 80%.
Correct.
20 million. If we exceed that or have to exceed that, what's the process?
Short answer is if you exceed that, it's going to have to be up to KDE. If they're going to ask you to change something in your DFP or if they're going to restrict what funds you use to spend that money on.
Okay. But it can be done if a need arises?
If the need arises, like for example, KDE cannot tell you, you can't spend money on catastrophic, like structural things that will keep the building up and standing. Granted, they won't give you the money for it, like they just won't say, here you go. But they can't stop you from doing work that's like necessary for the building to be safe and occupiable for anyone to be in. But if their goal is to do a bunch of finishes, Katie would be like, hmm, you are going beyond your budgeted scope, so they'll have a problem with that point.
Thank you.
David, do you have anything?
Maybe make a couple of comments. Based on the high school renovation cost, I mean, I, I think you could do a substantially amount of work at that school and make it very usable. And I'm, I'm talking, I don't know if the architect firm, they agree, but I think 14, 15 million dollars, you could, you could really do a lot of work there at the school. And because the high school, you know, we're placing the lights, all new HVAC, new windows, some roofing, it's limited. And we had a meeting with the design team last week, but I, I, as construction manager, I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we don't do, we don't go geothermal, we just do, you know, your boiler and heat pumps. And it'll certainly be a good system, very economical. You'd save a lot of energy costs with, with the new units. I, I personally feel like you have the funding available to, you know, bring, bring it, you know, upgrade it and make it very appealing to the students and staff. Now, I, I think at one time there was a, we wanted a gym, maybe a new gym. I, you know, I, I think, I don't know if you could get, I don't think you'd be able to do that, but maybe upgrade the gymnasium you have. And, but anyway, that's, that's my position. That's where I stand at this time. And, but we had a good meeting last week with the design team. We did look at performance service, energy service. Ms. Combs and I, there's not enough, what they told us, Jonathan, there's not enough, not enough scope where, there where they, they could do it. They're, they're, they're out on that, you know, that they try to help. They would do the audit, they would help do that once the job was completed, but there's, as far as funding, there's, it's not there. So, anyway.
If I can, one thing that David mentioned, doing a substantially nice renovation would bond you out fully, just for transparency. What he's describing will not be done with just the grant money. We're talking grant and then everything else that you have for your bonding. So as long as that's clear and he's correct.
I think they've got, what, you know, it's 18 million or something? I guess something in total of 14, so that would leave you some bonding, but that, again, I'm, I'm using square footages based on the work we've done at the high school. And plus we added some. And I, I think we'd added some electrical service and I think we had a little bit for the plumbing. But like I say, until you get into the nuts and bolts of design, I mean, I could fluctuate, but I was, you know, for square footage of the building is correct and I, I think you could do some wonderful things there at the middle school.
So we, excuse me, so we have 18 million in bonding right now. Is that including the 7 million?
18 is including the 7. We have about 11 and a half bonding right now.
Okay.
So our goal will be in March, we come to you all with maybe an option or two for what we think could fit with the minimum budget of the grant. And then what else you could probably decide to choose to add into that to supplement the additional cost for any other scope that you think is important. But that's the goal for Wednesday or what's in March, is to have those options available for you all to, to decide on.
I don't know if you hear me or not. I assume you have a breakdown of what you have on here already for the major renovations for this 10 million, 578?
Yes.
So could we have a copy of the breakdown?
Sure.
That you have as far as what KDE says each thing costs or what you've got here?
Sure, yeah. I could, yeah, I could send that to Mr. Evans and it's, it's an Excel from the audits themselves that we have to submit to KDE so I can get you the breakdown of each one of those, yes.
Okay.
I will make you, make you aware that all those costs though, they don't really care what kind of system you have, they're all square foot cost, but yeah.
So if we're looking at this 10 million, 578, of course, I know it's just their cost, what would be the cost right now is what I'm saying. How much more would you add to it? Up to 15 million or more than that or?
That's what David, myself and then Danny are doing currently. We're trying to figure out how much each of those things would cost line by line so that you all have a way to pick a full package of if you want to do your HVAC, here's what we think it would be fully realistically compared to what KDE says. So I don't have those answers for you, but you will have those answers for the March meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys. Item six. Discussion of the March 1 allocations.
Ms. Combs will cover the March 1 allocations.
Hello. Okay, so first we'll go over the preliminary staffing allocations and they are preliminary, so there will be another set coming to you before the May 1 allocation is due, the final. You'll approve that in April, probably with the salary schedules. And it looks like, usually in the preliminary, it looks like we're going to lose a few teachers, but don't let it scare you because of course this is just preliminary. But this year, actually, three of the four schools are looking to stay the exact same as they are at currently. And then one school is actually showing a need for an additional teacher. Of course, those could change. We always pull the numbers as of where we are right now and then we roll them up a grade level. We do estimate for kindergarten, but we've, we've estimated pretty well the last few years. We do like a five-year average for kindergarten numbers. And then the second thing is the SBDM, preliminary allocations. And that's like the Section 6 money that each school gets for copy paper and just general supplies that the teachers would need at their schools. And those are calculated based on the 930 ADA amounts. So they all did decrease some due to our attendance decreasing a little bit. But again, those are preliminary. The SBDM councils will approve those for each school and then they'll get a final allocation in April. Any questions?
Thank you. We're adjourned. I'd like to call to order this Bath County Board of Education meeting, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, seven PM. Discussion and possible action on tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I have a motion by Eric, second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please take a moment of silent devotion. Amen. Our student spotlight is Crossroads Elementary tonight.
I think they already stole the spotlight leading us in the pledge, thank you guys for that. This is our academic team, they have been working really hard all year, and then just a couple of weeks ago, we hosted the Governor's Cup District Competition. I just gotta brag a little bit before we get to the kids, you're gonna get your spotlight in a minute, but I gotta brag on our coaches. Wonderful job of organizing that event, we had a ton of staff show up. Our, the rest of our student body supported us, we had a nice pep rally that Friday. And one of the coolest things was, we had some kids show up, not on the academic team, they just showed up to support. So I thought that says a lot for what these coaches have done to drive up the support for our kids. I'll turn it over to our academic coaches.
I'm not tall enough for this, okay. All right, Brad, if you'll hit the next slide. So we're gonna start, I worked really hard on this and it's not working, but we're gonna start with our members, so you can hit the next slide for me. So for fifth grade, we have one returning fifth grade member, he was, we had a very heavily fifth grade loaded team last year, so he was our resident fourth grader last year, so Mr. Reed Trip is our returning fifth grader, so Reed, if you'll just say hi. Awesome. We have Mr. Knox McKenzie with us as well in fifth grade. We have Mr. Eli Malone. Ms. Serenity Plank. And Ms. Taylor Burt. In addition, our other fifth graders that aren't here are Nyla Dunlap, Eliana McCoy, and Aiden Hayes. If you'll go on to our next one, thank you. For our fourth grade members, none of them are present, but we have Ridley Cole, Kenley Dennis, Piper Hailey, and Shaylan Hailey. Go to the next one. And our resident third grade member, Mr. Ryan Richardson, who is also not present. But we did wanna make sure that we highlighted all of our students for all of their hard work, especially with everyone being new to the team this year except for Reed. So they all had to learn what academic team is, where our strengths are, a lot of practicing even through the weather and everything. So we're really proud of them and everything that they've done this year, and then we're gonna go on and talk about how we hosted the District Governor's Cup. So, oh, coaches, myself, Haley McFarland, and Ms. Hannah Boykin were fifth grade teachers at a Crossroads. But we, with the help of a lot of people and a lot of grace and helping hands and late nights, we were able to host the eighty-second district competition. We had a lot of compliments on that and how smoothly it went, it was a joy to host, we hope, hopefully to do region here in a couple of years, once we've got all our bearings and things, but it was really an honor for our team and our county to be able to host this, so just a big win there for us. And then for our content testing areas, we had three folks place from our team that will be moving on to the regional competition. So in fourth place for arts and humanities, we had Ms. Taylor Burt. In first place for social studies, we had Knox McKenzie. And in first place for science, we had Mr. Reed Trip. And it was a big honor, and one of the things that comes along with hosting is each year at the district competition, each, one member from each team goes and votes for, on the sportsmanship award, and we graciously voted by the other teams, were the recipients this year of the Catherine Hume Sportsmanship Award, so we're really proud of that. This is mine and Ms. Boykin's first time doing that at a district competition, so we're really, really proud of them and the sportsmanship that they showed, and how hard they worked through it all. And that is the end of our little presentation, but we just wanna congratulate, congratulate our kiddos on how hard they worked, and just thank you for all the support that we had and we continue to have. So it is, we're grateful to be here and we appreciate you guys having us.
Thank you, thank you, Crossroads, and congratulations on your win. Item five is superintendent and board communications.
I'll just speak very quickly on something I spoke about before, and it's the decision to cancel school and practice and games. And so there's been some people reach out to me, and so I just wanted to share it publicly, they can watch it on YouTube if they like. But every day, we have to make on these weather decisions, we try, if at all possible, to make the decision the day before, to allow parents to, that are in need of childcare, something to make those decisions, but like this morning was a decision we had to make this morning. We didn't know what the road was gonna look like, and so we try to make those calls as early as possible, again, for parents. But some people have asked, like, tonight we have a ball game that's going on, so transportation, the decision is, we have nineteen hundred kids that we have to make sure we can get here safely. If we can't get a lot of those kids here, then we cancel school. Today's a good example, we may get three inches, and then within three days, our main roads are perfectly clear, and we'll miss school for five more days because our back roads are still iced over because they're not getting the sun. But when we feel like it's safe to travel, ball teams are much smaller, so if a coach feels like he's got, his kids can get there safely, then we'll allow them to practice. If we feel like we can transport them down a main road to an away game and get them there safely, we'll allow that to happen. If not, we'll cancel it. And then the other factor comes, if it's a home game, when we had all that ice, the roads were clear, but our parking lots were solid sheets of ice. It's not safe for visitors or people who wanna watch a game, afraid they'll fall in the parking lot. So there is a discernment, so when people say, how, we put athletics over education, that's not true. Getting twelve kids to a game that all live in town and the roads are clear is different than trying to get kids on a back road. So those are two, I just want everybody to know, those are two separate things that we look into, but if it's unsafe, it's unsafe, we cancel all things. So we'll probably look at three to five inches on Wednesday, all practices will be canceled because the roads won't be clear, school will be canceled. So we just, we go to great lengths to try to meet the needs of the kids, but number one, make sure they're safe. So if anyone has any questions about that, they can feel free to call me at the board office, and I'll be glad to talk to them in detail. But we do the best we can with the information we have, and we're trying to make, make the world go round and support our kids, but do the right things at the right times for the, for the kids. Thank you.
Item six, discussion and possible action on approving the following items, A through K. January twenty-seventh, twenty-five minutes. B, January financial statement. C, claims. D, superintendent expenditures. E, travel. F, use of facility. G, grant. H, review of all monthly bills. I, pay bills through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. J, request for sealed bids for district-wide copiers and printing. K, job for America graduates, MOA.
I'll make the motion to approve A through K.
Second.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by signifying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Do we have any public comments? None. Item eight, discussion and possible action on change order proposal, PR number twenty-eight. Owner requested credit for rooftop unit near gym, amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar credit on the Bath County High School HVAC renovation, BG twenty-two dash three seventy-six.
I'll make the motion to approve the possible action on change order proposal, PR number twenty-eight.
I have a motion by Carla, a second by Kim, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, just a minute, I didn't know if I overlooked number five. I know the superintendent made their communication comments, but did we approve the personnel and the fundraisers?
Five A personnel, sorry, it's just for review, and two years ago, we passed that we approve all.
I didn't know if all of those were district-wide or whether or not some of those were not, I couldn't distinct.
Oh, you're correct on that.
So part of those I didn't think were district-wide, some of them were specific ones, so just wanna make sure we're covered with approval of personnel and fundraisers, perhaps.
Well, when they come in, they say like BCHS, I understand what you're saying, so I didn't look at anything as district-wide, but if you feel like we need, I'm talking for you and I apologize.
It's all right, go ahead.
I feel like we need to approve five A.
A and B, just.
Five B.
You'd make, you'd make me happy if we just did a motion to approve them. Yeah, we'd avoid OEA and other of those abbreviated organizations.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve item five A and five B, personnel actions and fundraisers.
Second.
So I have a motion by Barbara, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Item nine, discussion and possible action of the updated revised Bath County District Facility Plan for a renovated Bath County Middle School approved by the local planning committee.
Motion.
So I have a motion by Eric, second by Carla, any discussion?
What are we approving here?
It was new, for a new school, they had to go back and make it so we can renovate it instead of replacing it.
Okay, but we're, tonight, though, when we approve this, we're approving this seven point one?
No, we're just approving for the state, so they can send it to KDE to make that change to the plan.
Okay, so that they will give us money?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible action to approve the tentative March one, two thousand twenty-five staffing allocations.
I'll make that motion to approve the possible action to approve the tentative March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five staffing allocations.
So I have a motion by Carla, second by Kim, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Item eleven, discussion and possible action to approve the tentative March one, two thousand twenty-five site-based decision-making allocations.
I get motion.
I have a motion by Eric, second by Kim, any discussion?
I have discussion, so what are we approving with the site-based decision-making allocations?
You're approving the money that we send from the district level down to the schools with their schools' funds.
Okay, gotcha.
All in favor signify by saying yes, yes, opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, discussion and possible action to go into executive session pursuant to KRS sixty-one dot eight one zero one F personnel.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes, yes.
Oh, I'll be safe.
Hi.
Really? Yeah. I don't know.
Okay. Cecil! I'm going back to work, so... Yeah, Ashley's going, uh, Shelley's going, I'm going, and I have a plus one. You want me to just text him real quick? Are you going Jeff Harvey Sissie?
I don't know if I am going to the conference. It would be a struggle for us. Uh, you can come get me that way.
I'm get-
Okay.
Hey.
I'm not sure, uh, it would be a- it would really be a struggle for me. All that walking and back and forth. I may just wait and go to Sunday conference or something.
I'm gonna miss you.
I know.
I just- I wondered.
I just don't think I'm up to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's go back. Motion to come out of executive session with no action taken.
And you're gonna add his email to it?
Yes.
'Cause of snail mail.
Yes. But there would be a close call there too, I don't think it's a good situation.
No action taken, right, no action taken.
That's your wedding anniversary?
Yes.
Item thirteen, motion to come out of executive session with no action taken.
I make a motion to approve to come out of executive session with no action taken.
I have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, any other business?
We have none, have any?
No.
Can we talk right here on this? Are we allowed to talk about anything? On other business? Oh, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Okay, but nothing, don't comment.
Just a sec. Brad, it still, if it matters, it still says we're in executive session.
So we have no other business at this time?
Do I need a motion? Do I need a motion where there's no other business?
No. Motion. Have a motion by Carla, second by Eric, to adjourn, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed?